Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 28th, 2020 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton is excused. Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk Vorba, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Item C, Approval of the Agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, July 28th, 2020.
Moved by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Item D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Are comments or questions by the board?
Yeah, I have a comment. Very nice job on all the communications and reports this month. Got a question for Chief Titterington. It looks like our Part I/Part A crimes, we equaled all of last year in the first six months of this year. I'm a little concerned, is that only because people are staying home and this is happening? Or, I mean, you guys are great, I don't assume it's just better policing, but the number is kind of frightening that we're actually one ahead of all of last year at the end of June.
Okay, so page thirty-three.
Page thirty-three. There you go.
I'll look into it and provide you some more detail here in the next couple of days and break it down specifically.
Which line were you looking at?
See, the 207 at the top up there, the January through June, see the 207 right there?
Yeah.
And then last year, we got the total A on the bottom down there, 206 of all the Part A crimes or Part I crimes. See that number? So that's apples to apples there, but it is kind of concerning that, you know, the...
Well, the number of arrests are way off.
Yeah.
Down, so you're right, it doesn't seem to follow.
And, you know, certainly the CSCs are even of all of, well, they're even of all of last year. I assume that's a lot of people staying home, but I don't want to make that assumption. If you can give us any kind of insights, Chief, if you'd be there.
Yeah, I'll provide you some additional detail.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Item D?
So, Mr. Supervisor, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item E is public comment. This will not be your only opportunity during the meeting for public comment. There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting, and we do encourage questions on individual agenda items as long as they are germane to that particular item. And we do limit public comment to three minutes. So at this time, anybody interested? Yeah, come on down. We will need your name and address for the record.
In front of the microphone there.
Speak close to the microphone. I just wiped it down.
Will you leave this on while I speak?
No, you can pull it down.
You don't have to. There is an exception to the governor's mask rule that says that if you are addressing a public body or giving a speech, that you do not have to wear a mask.
All right. It's a short speech.
Okay, just get close to the mic.
My name is George Belvich. I live at 44526 Clare Boulevard in Plymouth Township. I've lived in the township for 32 years, and prior to that, I lived in the city for 10 years. So I feel really comfortable in this community. Tonight, I'd like to share a few thoughts with you and offer a few suggestions about Elected officials, school leaders, community leaders must step forward and engage people they serve in the community dialogue focused on the topic of race. Being white shouldn't exclude one's involvement in critical discussions around race, just as being black doesn't exclude a person from being hated, discriminated against, physically harmed, and seen as unequal based on the color of their skin. As a community of white citizens, we have a responsibility to be allies for Black and Brown people, allies for those who are being marginalized, allies for the other. Identifying yourself as colorblind, or "I just don't see color," doesn't really wash. Colorblindness means paying less attention to race and racial identity. This is wrongheaded, and I feel very naïve. I'm the president of Plymouth Canton P-Flag. P-Flag is an educational, support, and advocacy organization for LGBTQ persons. A few weeks ago, we sent a letter to all of the elected officials in Plymouth Township as well as the City of Plymouth and Canton Township, asking you to take concrete steps to end systemic racism in our communities. We know that race, class, gender, and sexuality intersect equally and regularly in civic life, especially when it comes to policing practices. We outlined, Plymouth Canton P-Flag, four suggestions for township officials to consider for our police department. One, publish the police department's use-of-force policies and review at meetings. Two, commit to implicit bias training, cultural sensitivities, LGBTQ issues, and de-escalation training. Commit to transparency in publishing complaints about the police and strive to hire a diverse workforce. Many communities have initiated similar actions. Just last month, the Canton Police Department invited P-Flag to be a member of the Canton Coalition for Inclusive Communities. We feel these four suggestions are reasonable and pretty doable. More importantly, they provide a window of accountability, inviting the community to see data and examine practices. It speaks to the confidence you as leaders have in trying to provide the best services you can to your citizens, future citizens, and visitors. The murder of George Floyd this past May by a Minneapolis police officer horrified America. The video of a police officer holding his knee on the neck of an unarmed Black man for seven minutes and 40 seconds has left an indelible mark on the world. Each and every marginalized human being, every minority population, could feel that neat. George Floyd's murder is a clear call for change. It's a call to all of us. It's a call for us to take stock of who we are and who we hope to be. It's a call for leaders to be sincere and steadfast in addressing racism, prejudice, and hate in all of its forms in all of our communities. Now's the time. The coronavirus pandemic has provided us time for introspection and a time to think, a time to reflect and consider new pathways, new methodology, new and bold initiatives, commitments on how to serve each other and our community. As community leaders, silence cannot be one of your options. Silence implies acceptance, acceptance of maintaining the status quo. You must act. You have to be concerned. In 1963, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. gave the eulogy at the funeral for Addie Mae Collins, Cynthia Wesley, Carol Robertson, and Denise McNair. All four of these young girls were killed by members of the Ku Klux Klan, who planted 15 sticks of dynamite beneath the steps of the church they attended. Fifty-seven years later, those words from Dr. King's eulogy applied to what took place on a Minneapolis street in May of 2020. And Dr. King said, "The victims say to us, each of us, Black and white alike, that we must substitute courage for caution. They say to us that we must be concerned, not merely about the who murdered them, but about the system, the way of life, and philosophy which produced the murderer." So tonight, I ask you, as our leaders of this community, are you concerned? Are you concerned enough to do what it takes to try to make our community completely whole? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down. I would encourage everybody to stay to the three-minute roll, too, please.
Dear Supervisor Heisey and Board of Trustees, my name is Lori Mayers, and I am also with the Plymouth Canton P-Flag, an advocacy group for LGBTQ people and families. I've lived in the City of Plymouth for more than 30 years, and I own property in Plymouth Township. Seven weeks ago, we saw hundreds of people in downtown Plymouth protesting the murder of George Floyd and reminding us that Black lives matter. I am proud of Plymouth, the large turnout, and of our police department for facilitating the peaceful demonstration. But we are called to do more than stand by and allow peaceful protest. We cannot pretend that racial injustice is someone else's problem. For the sake of our community, all of our police departments must be transparent and accountable on racial issues. I ask that the Plymouth Township take at least five actions, and these, I'm adding an extra one to Georgia's. Number one, post data about arrests and citations, including demographics, on the township website. The Livonia Police Department did this recently, revealing that although only 4% of its residents are Black, in 2019, 39% of its traffic stops and 60% of its arrests were of Black people. I applaud Livonia for publishing this data, which shows that much work needs to be done. Plymouth Township needs to show similar transparency. Number two, publish use-of-force policies on the township website. Does the police department allow chokeholds or firing at moving vehicles? Number three, commit to ongoing training on de-escalating conflict, recognizing implicit bias against people of color, those of different religions, against gay, trans, and non-binary people, and those with mental illness. Every member of the department should get this training. For example, affirmations in Ferndale trained the entire Canton Police Department on treating LGBTQ plus people with respect. Township police should get the same training. Number four, explain on the township website how to report complaints about police and publish the results of these investigations, including aggregated demographic data. Number five, commit to hiring diverse workforces in public safety and all government departments. And finally, I see that Supervisor Heisey has asked to reinstate $109,000 in cuts you made to the police budget earlier this year. That money covers two years of ammunition, rifles, guns, and conversion kits, a key fob system, a third radio console, and, quote, "painting cell doors to match dispatch." He said, "We will never defund or underfund the police," but your own data shows that traffic violations are down 39% from a year ago, and arrests are down 32%. Is two years' worth of ammunition or matching paint on cell doors going to make this community safer, or fight larceny, mental illness, or opioid overdoses? You could call it a wasteful expenditure in what is sure to be a difficult financial year. As taxpayers, we deserve transparency and accountability. We need to know that our community welcomes people of color and LGBTQ plus people. Police accountability will improve the township's reputation, make residents and visitors feel welcome, and be good for business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We are going to move on to Item F1. This is the Western Township's Utilities Authority Annual Budget Approval. With us tonight is Aaron Sprague. Aaron is the Executive Director. The budget was tentatively approved by the Wautua Board yesterday afternoon, and it really is a, that's kind of a pro forma thing at this point. Now it has to be given to each of the township boards for their approval, but there were no changes yesterday, and we don't anticipate any other changes from the other townships. We are the first, though, to formally approve this budget. So, Aaron, the floor is yours.
I'll keep it brief, as usual. It's been a lot of years you've seen me, and I try not to talk too much. Unfortunately, the news is not quite as good as it's been the last two years. It's only a 2.25% decrease in our budget this year. The last two years, we exceeded 5% each of those years. The bulk of the increase this year is actually electrical costs. You can see, page one of the document you have before you is the actual approved budget. The subsequent pages are just backup that's used to derive that page one. We approve it with the departmental.
This one, Aaron? This page here? Yeah. This one?
Yes, yes. This is the actual budget that's approved. The remaining documents are used to develop this page and for tracking internally and to the board.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right one.
You can see that each of the line items, with the exception of O and M, is a decrease. O and M is a slight increase, and as I said, that's primarily due to electrical costs. The gross majority of that is electrical costs. We continue to see the benefits of full utilization of our YCUA capacity for treatment. We are working on it. We don't have the number yet, but we're working on assembling a running total of savings to date over the past three years, but I believe it's in excess of $15 million. So it's been a significant savings over the past three years, and it looks to continue.
And that's for all three communities, right?
It's a total for all three communities, not just for Plymouth Township.
Yeah.
We have held the YCUA rate steady for the upcoming year. That is, by and large, our largest expense. That represents 7.5 million of our 10-plus-million-dollar budget, and that rate will be steady for the next year. We've included a small increase for one month because our fiscal year doesn't jive with theirs, they're off by one month. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions by the board? Any questions by the public? All right, then, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move the Board of Trustees to approve Resolution 2020-07-29-71, adopting the 2020-2021 Wautua budget per the recommendations of the Wautua Executive Director.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, don't go away.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Next is Item F2. This is the Great Lakes Water Authority Wautua Industrial Pretreatment Program Resolution. There's a lot of different moving parts on this particular item. If you could explain to us why we are doing this, why we have 90 pages of legal jargon here, and then I would probably turn it over to Attorney Kevin Bennett for his opinion on whether or not we really need to adopt an ordinance in the future to comport with what this resolution speaks to. I personally don't think we need to do a resolu, an ordinance. I'd hate to go through the hassle and expense, basically, for a ministerial act, and I think once you guys understand what this is all about, I don't think it'll be, it should be obvious to you that it's not, it's not really necessary, and that this resolution should satisfy the concerns of the GLWA. Aaron?
I guess I'll try to be brief again, but several years ago, I came to you when we were discussing termination of the Wayne County contract, and we had several options. One of the key issues that we faced was the co-mingling of flows between the City of Plymouth and Plymouth Township. And along the way, we realized that a very low capital way to solve that problem was to basically trade areas of the township, actually both Plymouth Township and Canton Township, with areas of the city. So purely from a flow quantity perspective, the properties remain in the municipality that they have been, but we've traded responsibility for the amount of flow generated in what we've called the swap areas. Because of those swap areas, there are two districts within Plymouth Township that are still tributary to the GLWA system in Wayne County. Part of the termination agreement that we finally executed with Wayne County requires that each member community adopt GLWAs and PDS, or comply with the MPDS permit for GLWA and adopt their IPP for those swap areas. So the majority of your township, this does not apply to, it only applies to a very small portion of your township. But we are obligated to pass this resolution in support of the GLWIPP rules. The IPP rules themselves, the changes, as you mentioned, are voluminous. Most of them are very simple language changes, changing GLWA to control authority, that type of thing. There are a couple local limit changes. Historically, YCUA's local limits have been more restrictive than GLWAs. That's not true necessarily across the board, but in general, the YCUA local limits are more restrictive than GLWAs. The major change that was included in the IPP rules was the introduction of PFAS, which is what is called an emerging pollutant. EPA and EGLE and the treatment authorities themselves are still trying to figure out how to deal with it, and they've addressed that in this IPP program. Not how they will address it, but they've introduced the topic in the IPP rule changes.
Any questions for Aaron?
Yes. Just from a frame of reference, how many industrial pretreatment issues or reports have you had to file for an incident in the last year?
For Plymouth Township or in general?
Plymouth Township.
Uh...
Is it 100, or is it like 2?
I don't think there have been any.
All right. And for the swap, we're really just talking about this.
It's not 100. It's not 100.
We're really talking about the swap area, though.
Yes. The swap areas are north of Joy Road, straddling either side of I-275.
Right. So there's a potential.
There's a...
But it's very...
It's predominantly residential.
Yeah.
The IWC charges, which go to non-residential users within the GLWA service area, is very limited, especially compared to the township as a whole. Historically, those charges were hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now they're $5,000 per year. So that gives you an idea of the order of magnitude of the potential impact, and it's very limited.
Okay. Patrick, do you have anything to add? No, we're good. Any other questions for Aaron? Anybody in the audience have questions for Aaron? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Mr. Supervisor.
I thought, I thought Mr. Bennett was going to comment. I will add one more thing.
Okay.
I do agree with, in general, with your perspective. I think modifying your sewer use ordinance may not be necessary. It may strictly speaking be 100% correct to do, but I don't think it's necessary. The other factor is that YCUA will be performing sewer use ordinance modifications in the relatively near future, and it makes sense to me to hold off and do any modifications one time rather than two.
I apologize for interrupting, but I did, I thought you said, Mr. Supervisor, that Mr. Bennett would comment, so I'm sorry.
You mean about whether we should have an ordinance or whether we should have a resolution? Is that what? Yeah. Well, it's one of the factors.
Okay, just for background purposes, the way the township water and sewer ordinance is constructed, it has three articles. The third article deals with the technical rules applicable to sewage discharge facilities. Section 2 of Article 3 deals with Detroit Water and Sewer Department, which the township is no longer contracted with because that contract has been assigned to the Great Lakes Water Authority. And Section 3, which is Ypsilanti Community, pardon me, Ypsilanti Communities Utility Authority, and I understand that services most of the township's sewage disposal. In this case, if the board does adopt these rules, then I would say that strictly speaking, an ordinance is not necessary. However, Section 2 of Article 3 should be specifically repealed because a resolution cannot supersede an ordinance, and if the board wants to adopt the GLWA rules by resolution, it's already adopted, the DWSD rules by ordinance. So if the township wants to adopt the GLWA rules, which it looks like it will do tonight, then Section 2 of Article 3 of the Water and Sewer Ordinance should be repealed specifically.
Okay. So then, Kevin, with respect to that repeal, is that a major lift on your part?
No.
Okay. I mean, so we could have that at a future meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. So just, if I might, I believe what you had responded to me in terms of a question of why we need to do this, essentially from a legal authority or contractual authority standpoint, is you said to me, why don't you just repeat what you said to me, rather than me saying?
Well, we're obligated per the termination, one of the terms of the termination agreement to comply with GLWAs and PDS permit and their IPP, and the county sewer use ordinance. That isn't a new thing that came with the termination agreement. Historically, that requirement lived in the Waste Water Services Agreement that the township had with Wayne County, and that was one of the things that was important to bring into this document, the termination document, for the swap areas, only for the swap areas. It doesn't, and the termination agreement is specific that it applies only to the swap areas.
So the agreement we approved says we need to adopt these rules, essentially?
Yes.
And then I asked about legal authority, and I was told there's a certain provision of law, and since I retired from the practice of law, I decided to go down the Heart of Darkness and see if I could find where that might be, and I guess MCL 124.284A says that there's concurrence required by constituent bodies like us. So from an agreement standpoint, contractual, and from a statutory standpoint, I guess this board has to do what we're asked to do tonight. Because normally, I'm not in favor of accreting layer upon layer upon layer of rules and provisions and requirements, but we're obligated here to take this action, essentially. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-07-28-72, adopting the Great Lakes Water Authority Industrial Pretreatment Rules for purposes of certain areas within the township as shown in Exhibit A of Resolution.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Aaron, thank you very much. Have a great night. Next is Item 3. This is the DPW Land Purchase Agreement Extension. This is the, I believe, the second extension that we have had, we may be considering for this project. The original one-year agreement was approved by the board on December 17th, 2018. On January 28th, the board agreed to extend the purchase agreement to August 31st in order for Phoenix Land, Phoenix Management Holdings LLC to complete their due diligence. Obviously, with the COVID crisis, much of the legal, environmental, wetland, and other due diligence items have yet to be completed. We do have Mr. Gonzalez here tonight to answer any questions that you may have, and I'm recommending that we extend the purchase agreement through the end of the calendar year in light of the COVID situation and some of the roadblocks that Phoenix Management has had to deal with. And Mr. Leo Gonzalez is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Just speak into the mic. And you don't have to wear the mask for a public speech.
Thank you, members of trustees. I do have a information packet that...
Bob, I did give you some email today. It was late in the day, so I apologize. I sent it to your personal and your township account.
Yeah. It, however, did not include my cover letter.
Oh, well, we didn't get that, so...
Yeah, so assume we didn't get any of it.
Are we okay to...
Go take it through it.
Do you have hard copies?
I do.
For all of us?
Can I pass it out?
Yep. I'll pull it up in the meantime.
It included there are the exhibits that I sent over this afternoon of site plans, updated site plans on the, that have been generated since we last met.
So I have two copies of your cover letter. Is that unique to me or does everybody have that?
No, that was typal. That was a mistake on the person that put the package. Sorry about that. What I have here is sort of an outline of, of this project and what, what we have achieved thus far as well as what we need to achieve going forward. Um, some of the elements of this letter are similar to the last time that we had the meeting, and then, uh, many of them are updates. Um, inasmuch as we've since such time, we've completed a, uh, a full survey, uh, the topography survey out there and taken into account the existing grades. Um, but before I get into sort of the, 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 the finer details, let me give you some of the broader or maybe the more, uh, paramount, um, objectives here. You know, it, it's throughout this site plan, planning process that we've done internally, we've attempted to use the Port Street ingress egresses to service the both east parcel and the west parcel. Um, that is your currently your two curb cuts you, that, that the township has that services DPW building. As we looked at the grades and the access to the, specifically to the building to the west that I refer to as a thirty thousand square foot building, it just becomes much more, um, apparent that, um, that building, A, may need better parking, B, um, due to its size and the fact that we...
Leo, Leo, we have a, we have a map on the wall right now. Is that, is that relevant or is that a different map?
Go to the one that... No, cause that's the grade. If you could, uh, go to the next one.
Sorry, hang on. I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize. I didn't realize that you wanted me to have these ready.
Yeah, I mean, it was...
Well, is it the one, is the one that's a colored copy in our handout?
You know, the best one is the, of the three.
That's it.
The first one.
Which one, Leo?
The one that has the actual square footage on the building.
It's got the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's, wow, easier to read.
Did you see?
The one in the middle that's not color.
This one?
You, you hit it there. Hit it again.
It's got the big box and fifteen thousand square foot in it.
This one here?
Try it. It says topo though.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. That's our discussion, that's good.
Yep.
So...
Okay, great.
What, what became evident is this building on the class... We just weren't going to service it through the Port Street access points that are currently there. Um, so what, what interferes with us kind of going to the next step until we figure it out, well, at least until we get the Wayne County to cooperate, is they have a right-of-way piece here that's sort of a triangle, uh, area there at the top left of the, see the triangle at the top, right up at the top? That is an old right-of-way piece. We think probably what have happened is after the industrial park was completed, there was a unbuildable piece of property that was left over and it just got dedicated back to the county. Uh, maybe that was the byproduct of it. Maybe the Port Street, of course, was, uh, granted, uh, back, those streets were granted back to the county and this was a leftover portion. Well, here we are, fast forward thirty years, and this seems, seems to be a, a, a pretty good piece to add as part of this building to the west. It helps us with access, helps us with parking, and it probably gives us a better, um, overall image of whoever goes in this thirty thousand square foot building, we hope is a pretty prominent flex tenant, and they're going to want their own dedicated entrance. They're not going to want to come through the DPW entrance, um, and, and make a hard right. And, and as my planner notes, just most recently, he says, you know, trying to get truck traffic in and out of the Port Street to the west with the forty-five foot trailer is just not going to be a smooth transition. He says, you know, I can make it work on paper, but in, in reality, it's going to have, you're going to have some difficulties. So since we've last talked, I've opened up the discussions with the Commissioner for, uh, uh, Plymouth Township as well as sent a letter to, uh, Kalilah Hall of Wayne County, who oversees the real estate, um, uh, these transactions, this is kind of under his department, requesting that they consider, um, allowing us to acquire this piece of property. And with the idea in mind that we'll join that property with the, it's approximately two acres on the west side and be able to accomplish, um, be able to, um, improve some of these obstacles that I see that we have by not having it. Um, since we last met also, it's, the, the curb cut on the east side here that's going to serve this building, um, it's, it's not going to be able to come down through this side of this DPW building the way it is now. The reason being, here again, access. You've been, most of you have been on the DPW site. Those curb cuts were really made with the idea in mind to service that building alone. It was never contemplated that the adjacent parcels would, uh, that those parcels would service the adjacent parcels. So the radiuses are not correct. And so what I think we're going to have to do on this other curb cut is we're going to have to bring it across this wetland area. We're going to have to covert it. We're going to have to ask for DEQ approval to do that. I, I don't think that they will, um, give us too much of a hard time if we can demonstrate to them why this is good planning and, 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 uh, with the idea in mind that the only reason we're, we're filling in that section and put a covert is there, is to grant better access to the building to the east. We've also taken these plans and submitted them to the Wayne County, um, Drain Commission. I have been in discussions with them before. I wanted to kind, before we go to the next stage of this process, which is now that we understand sort of the configuration of the buildings and the access points, we kind of got to get a better handle on what our finished grades are going to be, what our detention ponds are going to be, and I wanted the county to weigh in on that to tell us, here's what our expectations are you with stormwater. This is what we want you to plan to, and then kind of give me some input now on how they view your existing stormwater. You know, maybe more details than you're looking for, but I think it's, it, you know, it's important for me to point out that, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces to developing this piece of property, and it, uh, it involves Wayne County, uh, Drain, and now involves Wayne County, I'll call it real estate. It, it'll involve Eagle, which is the former DEQ, uh, uh, all with the idea in mind or, uh, uh, all with the, uh, uh, um, with the provision that we need to secure approvals from these respective agencies in order to develop this property.
Do you have to have those approvals before you make the purchase?
I do.
Is that what's in the purchase agreement, Kurt? That they, that these are required?
I believe it would be required for the, uh, both under the purchase agreement and before he would propose any new development at, at these sites, even with the building department. So I would say both.
Okay, so you're not speculating at all? You want to make sure every box is checked?
It's a two-part question. The first part is yes. In order to build the building on the east and building on the west, I need to have approval from Wayne County for the stormwater management. I need to have approval from them for the sanitary, the water to extend to these buildings.
That's usually not done in a project. It's usually after you own the land is when those things happen.
On the contrary. Uh, that's not how...
Wait a minute.
That's not how I...
On the planning commission, they typically, someone has a piece of property, they bought it or they have an option on it, and they start the development work with the county. I, I'm just trying to understand what your plan is. So your plan is different from what I would normally understand, that you have to have, you even want Eagle's permission and signature before you go. But you're not going to get this by December thirty-first, I don't think.
So I've been through the planning commission a, a few times, and here's my take on that. Planning commission will always give you approval subject to Wayne County approving your curb cut, approving your stormwater management. They, they won't give you a final approval of this until those approvals are secured, even through a DEQ or Eagle now permit. I would agree with you that planning commission would say subject to, but ultimately, you're, we're going to have to have those approvals. If I'm going to build in the township this project, I need to have those approvals. The other element of this is I've got to take the elements that are in common between the DPW and between this future project, which will be at least one of those curb cuts, we need, need to create an easement between the parties. We're going to have to relocate a sanitary line here that is actually part of the DPW's line in order for us to, uh, build this building to the east. Um, it was put in, in that, it was put in place at a point where there was no ever, uh, future thought that there would be another building.
Is the sanitary line the lead to the Port Street building or is it a main?
It work, it goes on to the east. So it is...
It's a main?
It's a, it's a main. It's probably an eight to twelve inch. Um, you know, there's going to be a cost associated with that. It's our cost. We understand that. Um, um, and you know, to, the, so, so with, with this project, with the, with the, the issues that are, um, you know, and all, all, and that being said, you've got a huge topography issue here. You've got land that's been built up, it's just a natural, uh, in some cases, it might be some fill, and in some cases, it just might be the byproduct of the agile, uh, of the, uh, topography of the land. But we've got to balance it out so we've got sufficient amount of, of, uh, finished, sufficient amount of pads to support these buildings in order to get trucks in and out, in order to get parking, uh, in the parking lots, in order to meet certain slope requirements we call, uh, which you need to meet on a commercial project that you need to meet, uh, can't exceed eight percent slope. So, you know, there's a lot of things to be covered here that, uh, we want to be able to secure or at least get a bit down the road here to understand whether the county's going to approve this or not.
So the ask tonight is just to, is to give you more time?
Just an extension.
Leo, how long ago did you send a letter to Khalil?
I initially had a conversation with Khal when we first started this project.
And I've had discussions with Dave Schreiber as well, and maybe you have. Just because that we were in, when this, long ago, in discussions with the county, we had talked about acquiring that triangular piece of property, which is essentially worthless to the county, and they came back with a really outrageous number, which we walked away from.
Then I paused and I said, well, let's see if we can live without this parcel. Then I had some subsequent conversations with Khal, probably the beginning of the year, early, early of, uh, late last year, said, hey, we think we want to revisit this extra piece and come back and ask, do an ask for it. I said, let me open up the conversations with the commissioner, just tell her that, you know, we're interested in this. Melissa Dobbin instructed me to go back and have the discussion with Khal, and I recently sent him a letter saying, hey, let's, let's start formalizing what steps we have to take to secure this piece. And I sent him the site plan, so I showed him, you know, full transparency, this is why we need it. You know, we're not speculating here. We need to e- enhance this piece of property we have here. You have a right-of-way piece that's of no purpose to anyone else other than setback or not even setback, maybe, uh, green belt of some sort. Um, and, uh, and with the hopes that he'll recognize, you know, the, him being, and, and with the hopes that he's realistic on his pricing, because the price that he did throw at us early on was way beyond what this project was supporting.
I, I, I think the county is far more reasonable than they were in the past.
Yeah.
For bright economic conditions and the fact that the county has come to us on more than one occasion for permission to sell excess properties of theirs elsewhere in the township.
That's where I was going to go is they're, they're going to be open right now.
Yeah.
And we've got very good relationships with Khalil and we'd be, I, I certainly would be more than happy to go back to him and say, hey, let's go.
Uh, we would appreciate that.
I, I think economic conditions in this case are working in your favor on that.
I hope it would be.
So this is the critical path is acquiring this triangle piece of property from Wayne County? Is that the...
It is to the west parcel. I, I wouldn't say it's a, I don't need it for the east parcel, but, um, you know, if, if you want to realize the value out of this property, then you've got to take the right steps, because if I can't buy the west property, it's not buildable to me, the next guy that comes along, it's not going to be very buildable. Listen, we're all going to put this thing down to our land planner and say, show all my trucks get in and out of here. His problem, my problems are going to be his problems in the future. So what I'm saying is if we want a piece that's functional, that can work for a broader base of customers, and I can build the west side here in order I can pay the money that we've, uh, we've, uh, promised to pay, we need to figure this problem out. So for that reason, yes, it, that piece there is critical to this development.
So the timing is good. This is an election year. The economy may be slowing, so maybe it's going to get done. Maybe we'll get it done. Maybe the county will sell the land.
Yeah.
I, I...
At a reasonable price.
I'm a little concerned because you made a comment that I agree a hundred percent with. December thirty-first could be tight here. A little of both.
Well, I think that what we should do is, I, I like taking this in chunks.
Okay.
Especially with the fact that we will have a new board members at the end of the year.
That's right. The hell with it.
Well, you know, I'd like to have, I don't want a, a future board to have to inherit something that maybe they don't want to deal with. So, um, and, and I, I, I'd rather just take this in chunks. It gives us a chance, frankly, to bring you back and quiz you on what's going on. Um, I, I think the biggest problem, more so than that land issue this year or this summer, was the fact that Wayne County Permits Office was essentially closed.
Closed, yeah.
I mean, they were not responsive for a variety of projects. Permits, drains, roads, you name it. I mean, no, they were, they were shut down, so, um...
Are they open now? At full force?
They're, they're open, um, but it's still very slow.
Fifty, fifty percent maybe.
Here's what I've been told.
Yeah.
New projects like this, it's got to wait...
Down, way down the priority list.
Wait to, all that stuff that they, they need to, the guys that were in in March, April, they're waiting for their reviews. They got ninety days of projects they got to catch up on. And, and, and my experience in the past is I could get a review out of them four to six weeks. That's when they were moving along.
Now it's four to six months.
It very well could be.
Well, and that's why we've had to intervene on things like Henry Ford Hospital and other projects that are very time sensitive.
Yeah.
You know, not that yours isn't, but, you know, we've had to, we've had to put, apply pressure to the county to get them moving on Henry Ford and, uh, some, some other things.
What I've asked them to do is, because I don't want to get so far down the road on the design on this thing and they say, well, we'd like you to change it this way. I've asked them, give me some comments on this plan now, and he'll probably say, well, give me some stormwater calculations, show me the detention bonds. Once I get those comments, then I could start putting together a set of plans that we can get designed, put in, hopefully get a review sometime in October, November, come back in December and say, here's the list of the things that they want done. Have a, uh, feedback from the county on the, uh, about the triangle piece and show the board the, uh, progression that we've had under a more reasonable, uh, processing time period, which we hope will be in the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
It won't be successful unless you and the township micromanage every detail. There's a lot of moving parts. So it's going to have to take some, a lot of attention.
It, it will, but you, to some extent, it's going to be how they can turn the information around to us, and we can only push them so hard because they've got three or four months of projects ahead of us.
Well, I, I go back to saying that we should still take this in chunks, and I, I'd rather do it through the end of the calendar year than extend this into, I don't know, April of next year.
All right, you ready for a motion?
Yes. Well, any other questions by the board or by the public? Okay.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I can read it. I move that the township board approved Resolution 2020 dash seven dash twenty-eight dash seventy-three, authorizing the township supervisor and clerk to sign the real estate purchase agreement amendment with Phoenix Management Holdings LLC, number four, for surplus township parcels located at forty-six five-five-five Port Street.
Motion's made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Heising.
Yes.
Clerk Borby, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all for your comments and, uh, the extension.
Thank you. Next is Item F-four. This is approval to advertise release of excess office space at the DPW building. Uh, this is an item which, uh, was on our plate probably back in the twenty-seventeen timeframe, and then we just shelved it and kind of... and then we just shelved it and kind of focused more on the land issues surrounding the DPW building. But as, as many of you know, we've got about 5,200 square feet of largely unused vacant office space, which was originally designed for various township operations. I think police operated out, out of there at one point, economic development, DPW, Jim Anowitz had his, had his office in there. I want to give him a shout out because I know he watches us every week, so hello, Jim. And I, we do have this surplus property, which I have isolated in the attachment. This is the best floor plan that I can find of the DPW building, and Bob, if you could just bring that up next. This was put together, can you rotate that?
Yeah.
Uh, one more. Okay. If you can just scroll down a little bit. Actually, okay, then scroll, scroll up. And keep going. Okay, stop, just stop right there. So right now, I put this map together, wow, back in early 2017, and you can barely make out the green elements there. That would represent the, what, what was the ex, what is the excess office space that exists at this time. Now, if you were to go over there right now, you would find that there are shelves and desks and chairs and things of that nature in these areas. These are not completely empty, but they can certainly be emptied out without much difficulty. We do have other surplus space within the building. The areas in yellow are the areas that would have to be used by the DPW crews. That would include things like obviously the storage unit, the storage building itself. There are other storage areas in the, in the back there, right, there's a mezzanine. I think the clerk's office still maintains some items back there. And Bob, if you can just scroll down again or up, so, okay, then the other way. You will see some other items there in green, the, there's a, there's one room that has to be up for joint use because there's a telephone and other electrical equipment in there. And otherwise, that's, that's kind of how it, how it lays right now. All I'm asking for is I, I would like to be able to put together a, a request for proposals, basically, just to advertise that we have this surplus space, quote, I presume that I would quote a, a recommended square foot price, and then see if anybody bites. I'm, I don't know if we're going to get any offers. I, I know, you know, over the last several years, we've had some inquiries from, I think one was a carpentry firm, plumbers, landscapers. Now, we don't want to, we don't want to start giving away parking space or anything like that, so it would have to be a rather limited, an operation that would have very limited parking and no, no storage or things like that. But in, in any event, it is a way for us to raise some extra money. We figure anywhere from $45,000 to $52,000 a year in revenue for the township. I think we just have an obligation in light of COVID and other cuts that we've had to make to see what we can do to seek new sources of revenue in the years ahead. And again, if, if anybody is interested, if we do get any offers, I would have to bring those back to the board, that would be a lease agreement, and then you could take a look at it at that point. And I would always give you all a heads up anyway, it would not be my intent to come to a meeting and blindside you with a, with a proposed lease agreement. So I don't know if we're going to get any takers on this, but I think we're, it's just a, it's just something I'd like to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I have two questions when you're ready.
Yeah.
Has Patrick Felrath and Hammond worked with you and reviewed this and signed off? So we don't have a surprise that, oh, I need that space, or I've committed for this or that.
Yeah, when we did this, when we first started studying this idea in 2017, it was myself, it was Jerry Vorva, and it was Pat Felrath. We also worked with some of the, the union steward at that time, Steve Milo, because he's, he was sort of the acting foreman at that point. So to answer your question, Dan Hammond has not been personally involved in this. I would, after tonight, I would clearly want to talk to him to see if he has any additional ideas, but a lot of that space there is still not utilized.
Next question is, what would be the process to select a broker to list it? To ensure there's transparency?
Right, I would have to go back to the township's purchasing policy and see what kind of range of revenue we would be, we would possibly be generating. If we are in the situation where we have more than one bidder, I would have to have, I would presume I would have to take that to the board, and you'd have to decide who you want.
Because I think technically it could be considered personal services, so you could just select anybody, but I'd rather you not do that.
I'd rather not. I mean, I'm, I'm uncomfortable just doing this on my own because I don't think I have the legal authority to lease or sell township assets without, without your consent. And I know that in the case of excess, for example, I'm looking at Kevin now, with surplus vehicles and other surplus equipment that we have sold in the past, we've, we have had to get, we've had to advertise that, and we have had to essentially bid that out, correct?
Yeah, what the law states is that the township may not give away anything, it's got to receive fair value in exchange for the sale or lease of any, any township asset.
Right. And I would certainly want a tenant, if we're fortunate to have one, I would want a tenant that would be rather low impact and not interfere with our operations, and that would also be in harmony with what we're doing there. I don't want, I wouldn't want anything unusual going on.
Also in li, also in light of, if we sell this property, that area will have a lot of activity going on, right?
Yeah. All things that we need to consider, but that's, I like to say that's a good problem to have if we can get, if we can get some parties interested in, in leasing this site.
5,000 is a, is a magic number right now. We're getting a lot of the developers looking for 5,000 square foot. So that's, that's a great number. And, you know, I think, I think it'll generate some interest right off the bat.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move to authorize supervisor and clerk to advertise and seek responsive bids for the lease of surplus office space at the DPW building, and to recommend final approval of a tenant to the Board of Trustees if a suitable tenant is found.
Motion's made by trustee Dorchevitz.
Second.
Is there a second? Trustee Kermy, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yep.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Supervisor Higgin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item F, F5 is the reinstatement of COVID-related budget cuts to the police department. It was only a few weeks ago that we removed approximately $415,000 from the 2020 budget. We were anticipating at least that amount in state revenue sharing cuts. And as a result of that action, we eliminated, or we deferred funding from various departmental budget requests for 2020. Since that time, the state of Michigan has agreed to reimburse communities for their first responder salaries for the month of April and May using Federal CARES Act funding. We submitted a CARES Act request last, a week from, a week ago Friday, for the reimbursement of the fire, police, and dispatcher salaries for that timeframe, and it was over $1 million. So it would be great if we could get all of that, we don't anticipate that we will, but even if we were to get half of that funding, we, I'm confident that we would have sufficient ability to at least restore the cuts that were made to the police department back in May. If, if we have more, if we, if we actually were to achieve that million-dollar figure or something close to it, then I would probably come back to the board regarding the fire, the fire-related cuts as well. But in these uncertain times, public safety is paramount, and I want to ensure that our police department is fully funded both this year and going into next year. So, that being said, the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that the township board initiate a resolution to authorize the finance director to amend her budget and appropriate the general fund balance in the amount of $109,429 to reinstate the cuts that were made to police as outlined on the screen.
Will you tell us more about the state shared revenue status?
Well, what's going on is-
It looks like we're going to get a windfall from this.
Well, what's happened is, the state has, now, I'm going to, I'm going to look at the chiefs here right now, because you guys helped put the, put the, the ask together. But it's my understanding, based mostly on media reports, that the, that state shared revenue, as we know it, really will not happen for this year. And in lieu of that, the state is taking what they're getting so far in the Federal CARES Act money and supplanting that, the loss in state shared revenue, which is based on the tax revenue.
We're going to have to give back what we've already been given for state shared revenue?
No, we're not giving anything back to the state, not in state shared revenue.
That's like a million seven, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, but, but it's because state shared revenues is heavily dependent on, on tax revenue, which has gone down, they are supplanting it with the Federal CARES Act money, and then tying that money to the salaries of police, fire, and dispatch. It, you know, you can-
You can cut it many ways.
You can, yeah.
But they also said that they were going to give a pay increase to police and fire. Is that happening?
Uh, we are, we are not doing that, but-
No, the government said that.
The $1,000.
Oh, that's the $1,000 in hazard pay?
Yeah, that's the hazard pay.
So each fire and policeman will receive $1,000 when?
Well, we receive, I think we receive it, right?
The township would receive it and then would pay it out to the firefighters, police officers, and dispatches, who, after we would receive the money, if we received the money.
What, it's going to be based on need?
It's actually based on-
First come, first served.
First come, first served.
Wow, that's upside down.
Well, we were first, we were, we got it in ahead of time, so.
So you're going to get a pay, you're going to get a pay raise during the period of time when most people took a pay decrease?
That's an act of the legislature, and so.
Right, well, that, then they didn't, many didn't get paid when they were at home, other than 600 bucks.
It's an act of the legislature, so, yeah, it's in the law.
All right, so now I understand what's going on. State shared revenue may disappear for 2020.
It may, it may, and I think it will, and I think it will be supplanted with this federal money. And I suspect that there will be more in the future. Federal money.
Federal money.
More federal money.
Yeah.
Get out the printing press, go for it!
Yep.
It's a legislative decision.
Wow.
So, anyway, that's, that's my recommendation, and that'll, that'll put the-
So somebody else can, I have more questions, but you guys can go ahead.
Yeah, I wondered if Chief Tiderington would want to speak to the specific items. Do you want to speak to the specific items?
Well, yes, the, these items were approved during the initial budget session last November, December. We would still look at them, and just because the money's put back in our budget doesn't necessarily mean we're going to actually go out and spend it. Any large expenditure would come back to the board for, you know, for, for approval. There, there's certain things that could be deferred till next year. Some of the stuff, maintenance, you know, I don't think our jail cells have been painted in 20 years, so, you know, there's some health and safety issues related to that. The, the ammo, that's for firearms training. We have a very strict training program that we put our officers through. And that third dispatch center, it's something that we've been trying to put in there. We, we have a supervisor now, and we want to have the ability to have our supervisor go in and monitor the 911 calls. So we'll be very, we'll, we'll look at it and evaluate each expenditure before we spend the funds.
Certainly, this does not preclude any of our training and conflict resolution and de-escalation. So basically, we're, we're talking two different pots of money here.
Absolutely, the, these aren't, these are not our training dollars.
And those have not been affected.
Have we actually allocated money for conflict resolution training yet?
We have an overall training program.
Right, but conflict resolution in the past has not necessarily been a main part of it.
Well, it, it has, and it, I don't know that we have a very, one specific class for it, but it's encompassed in other training that we do, yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, oh, you go ahead.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Um, I want to rethink this out of the box for a couple of reasons. Number one is the dispatch, third console, our calls for service are between, down by 1, 30 to 50%. So could we delay that and redeploy some of this money, like ammunition? Price for ammunition is really high right now. Would it be better to wait and only buy one year's supply?
Well, we could, it could be higher next year, though, how do you?
Yeah, it could be. And the other thing is, most people in Plymouth Township, the highest risk is to be a victim of identity theft and fraud and cyber crimes. Could we, and typically, police departments are not designed to handle those things. You know, do we need to, should we contract some company to help us solve those crimes? Because right now, when a person has a cyber crime, you typically say, well, you need to call your credit card company and all this other stuff, but is there some other use for this money that we could be out of the box and more affect what our residents see as their risk, which is typically online or fraud or scams, especially with COVID? I'd just like to think differently, especially since the demand for service is way down, traditional service.
Well, but, but it's only been down because we've been locked up for several months. The, the calls for service are going up, and I expected, the lockdown, as I said, it really did reduce the number of tickets, a number of arrests, and quite frankly, the number of crimes that were occurring. But I don't expect that that's going to continue.
Well, many big companies are saying they're not going to go back to work till January now, and some people are saying schools aren't going to go back. So I think we're going to be in a sleepy bear mode for quite a while.
But we may not be, so we, you know, we-
All right, I just, I would like to see us do something more creative out of the box with this money.
Well-
100,000 bucks.
Well, this, this money is allocated, and, and I would suggest then, Chuck, that we should take that up, that discussion up when we do the 2021 budget, which-
Well, we need, will we need this money in the, maybe we defer it and use it in the 2021 budget, which I think money's going to be far tighter one year from now than it is today. You think? Because municipalities have a lag effect. They usually hurt later than the private sector.
Well, if you look at economic development in the township right now, I would say we're, we're stable, if not improving at this point. Really, we have not been overtly impacted.
No, but I'm talking about jobs and income, people paying income tax, sales tax, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but we don't generate that, so.
All right, so we don't have any takers?
I, I would just remind everybody that we approve these things already in the budget, and I, certainly the dispatch console, which is the largest, the largest item, is something that we really do need. I mean, that's, those are the people who are calling 911, those are the people who need help, those are the people who are looking for direction. And it also services the city of Plymouth, we provide their dispatch as well, and they do share in that cost, so.
And if I could just add to trustee Kermy's point, if, if we could throw money at the, these, these technology scams and solve them, we would. But throwing money at it is, is not what the, is not, at least in my opinion, going to have any impact at this point. I mean, we're involved with federal task forces, many of the scams are out of the country, which certainly we don't have jurisdiction, and many of the scams are, as I said, I don't see a good use of these funds to try to combat that. But it's certainly something we can look at during the upcoming budget year.
Well, even like some training or that we could make, or buy a training module that people could look at, not only our, I'm talking about citizens or something, so that they don't fall victim to scams that are getting more and more sophisticated and difficult to discern reality in many of these. They're so good, they're so well-done and so well-thought-out.
Okay, I have two questions. One is, what's the status of the Western Wayne process where there was a public session in the Vonia? You talked about this at a prior meeting. What's, what's the status of that effort today? Is it still going on?
Yes, there's another one scheduled for, I believe, Inkstir, and then, I'm sorry?
A couple of weeks, sometime in August.
Right.
And that was to engage the community in, can you refresh my recollection about what that's about?
It's called a listening group.
It's a listening tour by police chiefs and elected officials going into communities and listening to their concerns, residents' concerns, and, and coming up with, you know, perhaps action plans. perhaps action plans to, to educate the public as well as educate the law enforcement officers as to perhaps what we can do better to serve our communities.
It's a joint venture between the conference Western Wayne and the Western Wayne County NAACP, and, and we are all involved in that effort.
And then my other question is, when the COVID thing was really going on earlier this year, both departments engaged in some community involvement activities. Could you remind me about what, what that was? I wasn't even here for a lot of that, so...
Well, yeah, we did a, a lot of birthday drive-bys. The, the kids were locked in the houses, and we realized early on that it, it really made their day if a couple of police cars and a fire engine drove down the street and turned the siren on in front of their house. The neighbors and it, it was, it was a community service initiative, and, and it was certainly no cost to the community, and, and it was very well received.
Philip, say any comments?
Yeah, initially, it was done for, obviously, for children and people having birthdays, but a, a side effect of it that was unintentional but well-received is, I received numerous calls from neighbors saying that, I don't know why, the police and fire department just did a parade down my street, but I feel so much comfortable knowing I live in a community in which they came and told us they were here to protect us. And I got numerous phone calls from a lot of residents saying they, they were just happy and they had a feeling of well-being in this community because we were out there keeping them safe.
Lieutenant Kudrow, with his own money, delivered matchbox police cars to all of the young kids that were having birthdays.
Really?
It was, yeah, and he bought them all with his own money, which was just totally amazing. There's a beautiful birthday party across the street, the woman turned 80 years old. She was crying when the police and the fire went by. It was, it was great to see.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
Public?
Oh, yeah, well, the public, anybody on this one? We've heard a little bit tonight.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2020-07-28-74, authorizing the Finance Director to amend, to amendment to the appropriate general fund balance in, in the attached police and dispatch capital outlay expenditure accounts in the amount of $109,429.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmy?
No.
Clerk Vorba, yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comment, limited to three minutes.
Supervisor Heisey, could I just add one, one, one quick story? Yesterday, when I was walking through the lobby of the police station, I saw this gentleman struggling to get out of a car, out of his vehicle, out in front of the station, and it took him a long time to get out of his car, and he, he had a walker, and he, he walked in and hobbled into the, to the lobby of the police station, and he said that he wanted to, he had a hundred dollar bill, and he wanted to buy all the police officers lunch. And, and he said he's been watching television, and he was disgusted and appalled at the continuous violence and anti-police sentiment that is being shown throughout the country on a daily basis. And we tried to talk him out of donating the money, we told him we, we didn't need it, but he insisted on it, and, and really, what that told me is, is that our police department has earned the trust of this community. It's earned the trust of the Board of Trustees, and it's indicative by the fact that you gave us, put this money back in our budget, and the gentleman that went out of his way to walk into the station to buy our officers dinner is because, as I said, we've earned the trust. Now, it, not going to stop there, we can always do better. The speakers earlier today made some good suggestions that we're either, are in the process of implementing or certainly evaluating it, so we can always do more. But I do want to thank the board, this board, for the continued support of our officers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Public comment. Okay, we're going to move on to board comments. I'll start off. We will not be meeting again here until August 25th. It's almost a month from now, so any bills that have to be paid will be paid at that meeting, and then we will not have a study session on August 4th because we're busy with something else, and we have no meeting on August 11th, so our, our next meeting will be August 25th. I've been updating the board also on what's happening at the so-called Salem Springs site. I don't want to go back through the history of that, but there is a water main that is being constructed right now along Napier, Joy Road, and Godfritzson. It is designed to serve the potential southern portion of the Salem Springs project, south of M14, and the northern part, which is north of M14. A, a water line, which is owned and operated by the Great Lakes Water Authority, extends all the way from Dearborn along Joy Road, and it terminates at Napier. And back in 2017, Salem Township entered into a contract with the Great Lakes Water Authority to tap into that water line, which they have every legal right to do, we have no way to stop that, and we were fully aware of that. I had briefed the board in the past, either in verbally or, or in writing. We had been assured, we have been assured by the Great Lakes Water Authority that this tap-in will not impact our water pressure quality or, or other resources. There is a water, you, you will see at the corner of Napier and, and Joy right now, the northwest corner in Salem Township, they are building a pump station that is designed to draw the water faster out of the, out of the GLWA system, much like you would sucking on a straw, pulling that water out of the system to service the, the proposed Salem Springs development area. The, the problem right now for the developer is that he still does not have a sewer line, and in order to get a sewer line, he either has to tap into the RWTUA system, which is a non-starter, and/or he has got to drill a brand-new sewer line all the way from Salem Township, all the way through Superior Township, and possibly into Ypsilanti Township to get to the Yucca wastewater treatment plant. And I'm not even sure if Yucca has the capacity to handle all of this projected flow that they would get in the future. So I was told by the township attorney for Salem that, that the sewer line has been given approval by the Washtenaw County Road Commission. I really, that's probably just for easement and right-of-way issues, I don't think that's a, a controlling entity. And that also, he says that they've been given permission by Eagle, which is the state, and that, that is concerning to me, and I'm, I'm kind of surprised, and I don't know if that's a really, an accurate statement by the township attorney. So we, we are trying to verify that. Superior Township is still adamantly opposed to the sewer line, and we hope that they will stick to their position and, and not relent in, in light of the, the forces surrounding them. But we continue to monitor the situation. I've been in touch with the Washtenaw County Drain Commissioner. A lot of this has been going on without his knowledge either, so from a soil erosion standpoint, from a stormwater management drain standpoint, he has been in the dark on some of this stuff as well. So that actually works to our advantage in our efforts to thwart this project or steer it in a different direction. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, on that issue. Are there any questions for me?
Are, are they planning any water storage near that pump station? Either above ground or below ground?
I have, I have been told by Great Lakes Water Authority that the Salem Springs project would require a water tower, similar to what we have. So for the same reasons that we have a water tower, you store it, it's, it's the peak versus non-peak usage factor, so they, you, you pull it, you pull it during the night and then you release it during the day.
Well, that will reduce the risk of lowering our water pressure if they have storage.
So I guess I misunderstood. I thought Salem Springs meant they were going to be tapping into spring water.
Yeah.
But apparently, they're not?
If only it were that simple.
There's no springs in Salem.
No springs, no.
Well, that's kind of a weird name then, isn't it?
It's a weird name.
Are they attempting, if they want to tap into our sewer? They want to do it on Michigan Avenue, on the main lines, or they want to do it here in Plymouth Township, or Canton Township?
They would really want to tap in at...
There's a force main that goes down Michigan Avenue to the sewage plant. There's two of them, two force mains.
Well, they got to get it from Salem to get it to Ypsilanti, so, so I would say that you would want, they would want to tap into Plymouth Township primarily, and then...
So way up here north, not way down south?
Yeah, well, tap into us here, and then our combined flow would, would go all the way south, which is very disconcerting, since our system was never designed to handle that additional flow from what will probably be a predominantly residential area. High-density residential area, so...
Yeah, the only positive is, it's the high ground.
Well, the other thing too, Chuck, is that you, you cannot have any additional members of WATUW without a unanimous vote of the board, so that's the supervisors of Plymouth, Northville, and Canton. Now, that's not, well, as long as I'm here, I'm, I'm a no, but I don't know what the future holds.
So the construction equipment just showed up? They didn't even give us a courtesy notice that it was starting?
Well, it's all done in Washtenaw County, and they haven't impacted the roads, and they own the western ed, edge of Napier anyway, so they're well within their easements, you know? They didn't even tell the Washtenaw County Drain Commissioner what was going on.
No, we, we got a call...
That's scary.
We got a call from a local realtor who notified us a week ago.
Oh, yeah, their clerk caught it out there.
Now, people have been asking me questions, and I, I didn't understand what was going on.
Oh, my Facebook page was blowing up...
Yeah.
...that night. Jerry and I went out there and drove around, that's why we know it. But they're clearing the easements right now, the, you can see where the water line's going to go in. It's a, it's a water line loop. We're, we're going to have to build the same thing at five and, at five in Napier someday.
In Napier, yeah. Superior Township welcomes our involvement, because I think they're playing by themselves right now.
We may want to consider a resolution at some point soon that would basically tell us, that would, that would support Superior Township's position.
Yeah.
And, and I think we should also call upon the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners to intervene here as well, because I don't think they know the full extent of what this is, what this is all about.
One other question. There was the additional 10 million that had been earmarked, and that was held up by the governor? Do you know the status of that?
I don't know if that 10 million has been held up or not at this point. I know that the earmarks all went to Salem Township, and the point, the, the purpose of that money was to be spent at Salem Springs.
But there were two 10 million.
Yes, there was a first, the first batch is in the hands of Salem, the second batch, there were media reports that it was going to be held by Governor Whitmer, and I, I still don't know if that's the case. I'm going to assume that because of COVID, it's probably been held, because they're holding, they're holding money for us right now.
Holding evidence.
So, any other questions for me on anything else? Okay, Jerry?
Thank you very much. A little bit of election news. We've issued some 9200 absentee ballots. We have approximately 40% of them returned, and I would ask the public, you know, vote your ballots and then bring them to the township. Don't rely on the mail. The mail has been moving very slowly. I would hate for you to go through the effort of, and us go through the effort of giving you a ballot and you receiving one, and then have it come to us after 8:00 PM on Tuesday. And just because you have that much time, please don't take it. If you've decided to vote your ballot, vote it, bring it to us. We have a brand-new drop box out front, the other ones were rusted and leaking, and so we, we purchased one for the, for the treasurer and one for us. We are getting some money from the state for, for, for that, and please get your ballots into us so that we can process them. With this volume of, of absentee ballots, which is three times what we would normally experience in this type of election, as a matter of fact, when we were elected in 16, we had a total of 7,500 ballots. So these are just the AVs, this is not counting any potential poll of voters, so, so it is a, a large amount of ballots. It takes time to properly account for those ballots, get them into the qualified voter system, and then sort them and identify them to a precinct so that they can then later be counted. So all that takes time. The longer it takes for you to get them in, the longer it will take us to do that process and then finally count them. So be prepared if we end up with a large amount of ballots coming in the last day or two, that the, you may not get results right away, because it just takes time to accurately account for those ballots and do it properly. So please, please get those in. The staff is working very hard, and we're still experiencing a few people who are bowing out of, of working the polls. I had a class today, I have another class on Saturday, we're trying to recruit some, some more people in, so we should have them staffed well enough. I'm expecting a lower turnout at the polls, but that, we have to be prepared, as if it's a regular poll voting system. So please get your ballots in as, as soon as possible.
So, so what's going to happen? Do the scanner machines have the throughput capacity to be able to handle those?
Yes, well, part, part of the problem is, is that you have to check all these ballots in, they have to be accounted for, and part of that process is having the people at the polls know who has already had an absentee ballot.
Right.
And with, with, you don't want someone showing up at the poll saying, well, I'm here to vote, and they have a ballot otherwise, you know, so you, we have to supply them with that data the night before the polls open, that, that there's this many absentee ballots show up, so that when someone comes to the poll, you know that they've got a ballot out there.
But in terms of the, the election day itself, as the ballots are going to be scanned, there's a throughput capacity to the scanner?
Yeah, the, the scanner can handle that, but you still have all the manual checking of, envision an, an assembly line. We can't open the ballots until that morning, and so you have a person opening the ballots, you have another one looking at the number and, and recording it, you have another one taking the tab off, you have another one taking it out and laying it flat, and then you have other people who feed it into the machine, so that the person looking at the ballot doesn't know who submitted the ballot.
So in that process, that kind of end-to-end process, do, do you know where there's potential bottlenecks and how we staff for that appropriately?
Well, no, again, we, we get enough people to, to handle that, but if you have a delay in getting it into our system, if there's a large, we can't get it to that spot first. It has to, it has to go through our other process first. So if there's a large number of them that have to be checked in before they get to that, to there, there's a process of checking them in, and if that's delayed, then it, it's going to delay the whole process.
Well, you need a manufacturing process engineer, seriously, to debottleneck it. Somebody should take a look at it.
Well, it...
Great Six Sigma Project.
The way to do that is to be able to, one, either have enough people to, to do this...
Yeah, but there's more to it. Sometimes enough, more people doesn't make it faster, so there might be something worth looking at.
What I'm saying is, if you get a large volume of absentee ballots, you still have to check them in. We have, we have five computers set up there with people qualified to check the ballots in. If that number is too high, you can only check in so many per hour, and so you, you can't do it any faster, unless you have more computers and more people. That's, it, it all adds up. And if you could open the ballots ahead of time and cut down on that process here, you could speed it up, but that, we're not allowed to do that.
Well, I don't want you to open it up two weeks ahead of time like other states do.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just telling you, when you have the situation you have right now, where you have a large number of ballots, it, it's just going to take time.
Jerry, I, the other thing too that I've tried to emphasize with people is, it is the law in Michigan that if you don't get that ballot by 8:00 on August 4th on a primary day, it does not count.
It does not count, doesn't matter when it's postmarked, doesn't matter at all. I stand out there at 8:00, and as soon as the bell hits 8:00, I empty the, what's in the, in the mailbox, and it doesn't matter that 1,000 people come and put it later, those ballots are not counted. It doesn't matter that the next day 1,000 ballots come in, they're not counted. If I don't have possession of them at 8:00, they're not counted.
So we are urging people to complete their ballot, they don't have to bring it in tomorrow, but complete your ballot, take your time, do your research, but, but please, bring it in personally. your research, but, but please bring it in personally. Bring it in.
Don't, don't count on the...
Do not count on the post office.
We, we've had people, we've mailed out ballots on the 1st of July that didn't arrive till last week.
Right.
And so don't let that happen to your ballot coming the other way. Please drop it off. We have a drop box outside, we have a drop box right inside the door here, so you have to come all the way in, and we have a drop box at the, at the counter, so, so please take...
Is the post office doing anything to expedite or flag those? I mean, obviously they're ballots when they get dropped in the box.
Well, it would, you, you would think that, that all government entities would understand that this is a fundamental right and that you expedite that.
I would hope.
They're, they're having their own issues too. I mean, you, you have staffing problems at the post office.
Huge staffing problem.
You know? And, and when someone gets sick there, they can't come to work. They've got to go get a test to make sure that they're, they don't have COVID before they come back into their work. And they have a, a system inside of their workforce to where you have close contact with, with people. So I understand their problem, just that the, the, the federal government and the state government are going to have to get on this for the, the upcoming November election because what we're seeing right now is only 50% of what's going to happen in November.
So, so if they didn't, well, you got 9,000, 9,000 ballots?
Yeah.
Incredible. So if they don't drop, if they're going to mail it, if they don't drop it in the mail by Thursday at the latest?
Today.
The state of Michigan is recommending today.
Today, today.
Okay. I'm, I'm just saying, we, we saw this happen with the tax bill. I mean, Mark Clinton mailed the tax bills on June 25th.
I know.
I didn't get mine personally for over three weeks later.
I know.
I thought maybe I was going to get, get it for free, but...
We used to be able to tar and feather the tax collector.
Huh? But no, I mean, it took three and a half weeks to get, to get to me. So it's just been, it's been a real, a real challenge.
So I sympathize with what their problem is, but they're going to have to get on this in the federal level and the state level to, to, to work this problem out because it's going to be horrific come November. And you don't want to deprive people of their fundamental right to vote. Also, but...
Yeah, you said you've had 40% return?
About 40%, and it's 38 and a half.
About 3,800, 3,700.
Yeah. And so, and, and we're still, and we're processing those, you know, we're getting them ready to count. And so if, if you get a large influx of, of ballots this weekend, it's, it gets difficult to, to get them done.
So what if, let, let me throw this question at you. So let's say I have an absentee ballot, but I, I don't have time to bring it in. Can I still vote at the polls on elections?
Yes, you bring your ballot to the poll and you surrender that.
So the voters, so the polls, they will take, they'll physically take my absentee ballot?
Take your ballot and then, and then log that they've received that and issue another one. So one gets canceled, one gets in.
Oh, okay, so they cancel the...
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, then, then I will vote in the ballot box.
In the ballot box, right. Yeah, you have to surrender your ballot.
Yep.
And people do that in all elections. They'll say, you know, you know, "I, I decided I just want to vote in person and I, here's my ballot," and, and then you can vote.
Well, voting in person is more efficient.
There's going to be a lot of people that don't mail their ballots until this weekend.
It's more efficient to vote in person.
Yeah, yeah.
The counting process, the workload...
The cost.
The cost. In person is the way to go.
Yeah.
All right. I have a question, since you're probably exceeding the budget massively, who, which analyst is helping you track your costs and getting ready for a budget amendment? Because this, and then when you add November on top of this, your office is going to see a massive budget overrun.
I think maybe in the beginning, when I talked about this last year, I said it was going to cost a lot of money. And then the COVID thing added to it. I mean, so I was expecting this kind of natural growth of the AV ballots because of the change in the law, and COVID accelerated that so that, you know, it's...
Secretary of State did the biggest thing to accelerate it.
Yeah, so that did, that did not help. Yeah. Good.
All set?
All set, thank you.
Okay.
And right now, I've got 3,000 write-ins for me, is that the number I can...
Yeah.
Okay.
2,000 came from me.
Bob, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, okay. Gary?
Just, let me remind the candidates, everybody who's running, anybody who's running, please don't put your signs in a open field with everybody else's. We're starting to look like Canton and Northville, you know? And it's bad, yeah.
Did you take my sign that was on Ann Arbor Road today?
No.
In an empty lot?
I don't touch signs.
They disappeared, all of them disappeared. There was about a half a dozen there.
Oh, yeah, I think everybody's doing that. I suspect the ordinance officer does.
Well, the ordinance officer only takes them out on the easement.
It was on private property, wasn't it?
If it's on private property, then somebody, either the property owner or some naughty person took them.
Yeah. Just wanted to remind you guys that we're starting to look pretty bad.
But if you compare us to Northville, I drove through Northville today.
It's only another week.
But, you know, everybody's really, for the most part, everybody's really good about it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I give them a nice letter, we explain the situation in very clear terms.
Northville is...
Northville is a mess.
Well, they got a big race going on.
But it's always that way, it's always that way.
Okay. Jack?
Jack?
Well, on the good news front, at McLumpha and Ann Arbor Road, there is a new traffic configuration with a new stoplight. So this is something we talked about and...
So it's red, green, yellow, no?
Yep.
Yes.
And there's going to be, not crosswalks, but lights for, you know, walk, don't walk.
Yep.
And you're going to be able to press a button to cross Ann Arbor Road.
That'll be great.
So that you won't, you know, impede traffic.
Become road pizza.
There was a potential, and I mean, I guess this is true with any lights, but where it's positioned, the sun right now is right, at the right time of the day, you can't see what color it is. I could not see what color it was.
Yeah. So they're shrouding them, is what they're doing?
No, the sun was right with the...
Sometimes you just can't help it, the sun goes right on lights, I see it here.
It was right in line.
I'll buy you a pair of sunglasses. So related to that, someone needs to look at crossings in this township. For example, Ann Arbor Trail, west of the schools, there is a crossing sign, there's a school-children crossing, but there are no lines in the pavement.
Okay.
I don't know if that's an authorized crossing or not.
You're talking over by like Red Bell School and...
Past, west of Red Bell.
West and Bird.
I'm like Canton Center, between Canton Center and Red Bell.
Yeah, near Canton Center. Now, over near Miller Park, there actually is some type of pedestrian crossing, right, with painted stripes and so forth. So I would like to suggest that somebody kind of inventory those. I don't know when they were put up, but I think state law says if you approach that and someone's in that right of way, you're supposed to stop. Now, I don't know how you do that easily, about 45 miles an hour, but...
I wouldn't risk my life.
I think only if it's flashing, you have to have the lights for it.
So that just needs to be attended to.
If you could send me an email, because all of the roads are county roads except for Ann Arbor Road, which is MDOT, so just send me an email.
All right, I'll remind myself.
I can follow up with the county.
That's a good assignment for Melissa Dawn.
I think it would be.
There you go.
And last but certainly not least, I do appreciate very much the public comments that were offered today. I appreciate the letter I got, I did respond. One of the things that I think is interesting, and I'm not saying this as a candidate for reelection, but there's more diversity in this township government structure than there was three, three years ago, four years ago. And there are more organizations or subentities such as the Historic District Commission and the Environmental Leadership Commission, both of which are chaired by, by females. So we don't have the kind of diversity demographically here in Plymouth Township that other communities do, but I do think there have been strides made in the last four years to be more diverse, to appreciate more diversity of our, of our community, and I'm heartened by that. And I think that's something, that's a progress point that I hope will continue as this township moves forward. Chuck?
Just the question about putting some police procedures or processes, can we just like get a start with just a skeleton, maybe a couple of dot points, or get something up